Right for the flight slew.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Brian Cristelli, board member.
Michael Smith, board member.
Chris Nesman, superintendent.
Mark Keating staff.
Neil Bristow.
Can you support us through that Sam Maniola student?
Can you get her stuff?
What do you say?
Christopher Collins, student.
Is he present?
I was present.
On the incident.
Christian Porter's dead.
Brendan, same as student.
Calon Stun.
Maryland Girl Staff.
Candice Wells, my staff.
Eric Smith's staff.
Hi, I move to excuse Bernadette Bauer and Jamie Bailey.
There's been.
Sorry. I'll second that.
There's been a motion to excuse board members Bernadette and Jamie. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Might be worth pointing out to the students that to hold a board meeting, you have to have a forum, which is fifty percent plus one. So there's five board members. You have to have a minimum of three board members in attendance to hold a board member. Otherwise, the board meeting would have been canceled.
That is very important. Thank you. Approval of board meeting minutes for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Well, seconded.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Communications and comments? Anybody from ETO? ESP? Ecopa? Admin? Or persons we heard or public comment? Do we have anybody?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. Approval to seek a one-year dual and heritage language program grants with. Can you get your.
Hi, do you want me to stand?
Yes.
Okay, Christopher, whatever you said. So one of the programs I'm hoping to begin in the school district is the heritage language program. So it is specifically designed for our students who come from households that are Spanish only speaking or bilingual. And so it's designed to develop literacy in both English and Spanish, because right now they're going through our schooling system and they're getting English. And so right now we're beginning a pilot program at the high school and hoping to grow it. And so this grant is very small. The primary use of funds is for professional development, curriculum materials, and teacher time to collaborate with myself, staff at OSPI, to build out the program and to make it something that is robust and meaningful and, you know, valuable and supportive of our students.
Is this a one-year?
It is. It is a one-year grant. So OSPI has to annually request this to be added to the budget, just kind of based on school district statewide interest in the program. But it is one of the initiatives in the language field around dual heritage and tribal languages to make sure that all of the languages that students come with when they come to our schools are being recognized and valued and supported in our system.
Thank you.
I'll move for the approval to seek a one-year dual inherited language program grant. I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval to seek one-year dual inherited language program grants. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is approvals for Mark Keating to attend the ASA Social Emotional Learning Cohort in Maniola, New York, from October eighth, twenty twenty-three to October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Nesman?
Um, well, we're seeking, Mark is a member of the Social Emotional Learning Cohort. Maniola is kind of a special trip that we would like to attend paid through Mark Esser.
Paid through, well, uh, you know, the grant for us.
Or master-based learning grant. Um, part of the reason for this is Maniola is the school district where we actually got our batch books from. And it's also the district that has launched the same learning management system we will be launching, um, that we're in the middle of launching right now. I think Mark just did a teacher training last night. So it gives Mark also the ability to, even though it's on the other side of the country, um, it's the only school district in the country that's also running the same student data tracking system and learning management system that we are adopting here in Alma.
So we're gonna steal some stuff.
Library invent something that already works, so.
Alright. That's right. Good educators are always supposed to be the best thieves, so that's good. Uh, okay. I, go ahead.
Now, I'll move to approve for Mark Keating to attend the ASA Social Emotional Learning Cohort in Maniola, New York, from October eighth, twenty twenty-three to October eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I second that.
There's been a motion made and a second. To approve Mark Keating to attend a special social emotional learning cohort. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the Eagles volleyball booster fundraiser, Teresa Sanders. Is she with us?
I'm trying to see if she is.
I really didn't have any. The four things seemed very straightforward. So she's not here.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Michael?
Okay.
I will move for the approval of the, since they get their volleyball. It's okay. Um, unless she wants to tell us something different. For the approval of the Eagles volleyball booster fundraisers, as outlined.
Second.
Sorry. There's been a motion and a second for the approval of the Eagles volleyball booster fundraiser. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. The next is the approval of Elma Boys Basketball Booster Fundraiser.
Did you see Carrie in there?
She's, she's up there.
I'm in here.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi. It's all of the same things that we've been doing for the last couple of years.
I saw that name.
I don't have any concerns.
No, okay. Don't either. I'll move to approve, move for the approval of the Elma Boys Basketball Booster Fundraisers.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of the Elma Boys Basketball Booster Fundraisers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Night, Carrie.
Next is the approval of class of twenty twenty-six booster fundraiser. I think that is.
The Christmas wreath.
Just the wreath, right?
Same as earlier.
I have no questions or concerns, so.
Same here.
I will move for the approval of the class of twenty twenty-six booster fundraiser.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of class of twenty twenty-six booster fundraiser. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next is for the approval for state cross-country travel to Pasco, Washington. And that is. Cause Ron Clark with this tonight?
This is gonna be a, of a boilerplate approval on ensuring that we have travel approved before we get to state.
And it's documented, isn't it? Okay. I will move for the approval of the state cross-country travel to Pasco, Washington.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval for state cross-country travel to Pasco, Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is approval to accept a donation of six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents for flag system for the high school gym. Donated by Jason Olson of Edward Jones.
Jason is, uh, seeking to donate, uh, funds to, that'll have a lower down American flag for the gym for doing the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem at our home events. We think that would be a great kind of sign of patriotism and a way to, you know, just a great respectful, um, way to respect our community. I'm really thankful for Jason from this. Uh, the, the one condition was that the district would cover the sales tax on the, uh, on the donation. We feel that that's a worthwhile investment that will cover the cost of the sales tax. So just seeking the board to approve Jason's donation.
And it's just like the center chord drop down or?
That's right.
Okay.
That's very cool.
I'll move to approve the, to accept the donation of six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four, sixty-seven for flag system for the high school gym from Jason Olson of Edwards Jones.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is approval of class of twenty twenty-eight booster fundraiser. And there's Emily, do you see if she here?
She's here.
Are she available?
She is available.
We already talked about this, the dates, right? So we're good there.
Yeah.
And. I'm here on Zoom.
Okay, so Emily, uh, you are aware that the February ninth date is, um, already been given to another, approved for another fundraiser.
Yes, uh, Kindus called me today and we discussed it and, um, we can change the date. That's not a problem. We'll pick maybe one in March.
Okay. And then on your bunko poker night, that is held off-site, correct?
Yes, that will be at. Yes, at the Eagles Club.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Sorry, try to get back to them. Alright, I'll, is it my turn?
I can do it. I'll move to approve the class of twenty twenty-eight booster fundraisers.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of class of twenty twenty-eight booster fundraisers. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next is budget report. Lisa Arnold.
Ms. Arnold is currently working through payroll, so I will be giving the budget report tonight. We feel that our staff would greatly appreciate her ensuring the payroll is set up, collect correctly, since, uh, those checks are issued on Friday. Um, this is a copy of the current district expenditures on our district dashboard. This is our end-of-year balance. Last year through basic ed, we had about just shy of eleven million, five hundred, just shy of six hundred thousand dollars in basic education expenditures. Um, there's about ninety-two point two percent has been extended. Um, that's through last year. That's because we still have the time to connect again, closing out final invoicing, final salaries, stuff like that. So still gonna be about just shy of, just a little over seven percent left of our expenditures to show. As you can see, the bulk of our budget is spent on certified salaries, purple being the current year-to-date, which would actually be last year's as we're closing out, just shy of twelve million dollars in salaries for our certified employees on a twenty-nine thousand dollar budget. Uh, classified employees, also you'll notice that there's been a raise for our classified employee salaries. So these are the bulk of our benefits. Um, EMP is our employee benefits. They cost about twenty-eight thousand dollars a year per employee for benefits. So revenues. My right one. District revenue, as you can see, the bulk of our revenue comes in from the state and as a district, we had been growing in enrollment. So you've seen that our state, our state revenue has been increasing due to that student growth enrollment. You can see that three, year three, the yellow drop and down to the green, those are our COVID drops. And as we discussed last year, that purple has taken our district up well beyond pre-COVID numbers for student enrollment. So you can see that we've collected about ninety-eight point eight-five percent of our revenues. In the district, as you all know, we run on just shy of about thirty million dollars a year on, uh, on our district revenue. So about sixteen million comes from the state. In our general portion, I should say. Our district financial forecast. So, um, prior years, about two point seven million dollars, two point nine million dollars through our local levy. Our local levy is running again, will be, you know, following board action, will be running in February this lot, next year. Um, and even though we've had a increase in student enrollment, you will still note that, um, had about a surplus of about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in our district fund balance, two hundred, two, twenty-six point, twenty-six million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars was our revenue, twenty-five million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand. A lot of that was due to the growing student enrollment. So we finished the prior year, two point five million to a three point two, three, one million. Um, big reason why is we've been having growing student enrollment. And I think last year, as we noticed, our student enrollment grew every month up until about February last year. So our budget forecast shows a loss of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, just shy of a million. So our budget is still built, running at a budget deficit. And the bulk of that, again, is the salaries. Our August fund balance report show you budgeted amount, um, twenty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-three million total expenditures, but our ending fund balance on actual for the last year, three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So. Any questions on Elma School District financials? We have collected a lot in the way of grants and a lot in the way of Esther funds, um, again, from Mark's leadership. I mean, uh, three hundred and seventy, Mark's leading our master-based learning grant last year is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in state grants. So we've been pretty ambitious with grants. And when I do the superintendent report, a lot of that I'm gonna turn over and hand over to Mark to talk about a lot of the successes he's been having in this day and role. That was my warning. Questions on our?
I have no, I have no questions.
Right.
Student enrollment, uh, we're at fifteen hundred and sixty-three students for our basic education enrollment. Uh, sorry, that does include our ALE. Um, current between both high schools, five hundred and nine point eight-six student enrollment. Eric, something from, I think we're four sixty at the high school, the rest already is Chris Harbor High School.
Okay. Yeah, with, the open doors is, open doors is forty-six.
Got it. Open doors is forty-six.
Yes, maybe it's just about fifty, but I think it's almost fifty-five, sixty now.
There it is, forty-six on our open doors enrollment. So.
And what, what was our projected enrollment?
Um, this is not the normal enrollment report again. I think this is the standard one. I normally use Eric's spreadsheet that has the projected. So I think we're running, so Eric, stop and come around. We're running right at projected.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're maybe like two, three over projection.
Yes, with all enrollment, we're running at six, sixteen hundred and nine FTE. That includes our open doors, East Chris Harbor High School, the high school. Um, and all buildings, sixteen hundred and nine students district-wide. So this isn't my, this isn't the normal.
Can I ask on the, uh, I think it's the last page. It's where it shows the sixteen oh nine, but it shows the running start total of zero. Are they just factored in totally differently?
September is a non-recorded, uh, running start. A couple of things different about September is the running start is not recorded. And also, uh, we don't have our TK class in that mix. And so there's, now we're automatically, probably be almost twenty, ten, fifteen, twenty, actually more than less.
Just with TK?
TK, and then the running start, like say the first one, the point is October, so next week.
So we should obviously see, see a decent increase just from that?
Because TK is structured where you can't draw FTE unless a student is five, which would immediately disqualify your TK students from September count.
Right.
And then we began enrolling and counting our students as they begin turning five. So TK is always on a constant, um, enrolling growth. And then as Eric said, running start, because they didn't start classes, what, till this last week?
Yeah.
This week. Um, but this count is from the, uh, fourth, fourth day of the month, or Thursday.
Yeah, statewide, so it's, September's not a.
So these numbers will only go up. I think last year we ran sixty-six students in running start.
Yeah, we have, it's projected right now that, uh, all running start depends around fifty-five a month. We're seeing.
Cash enrollment.
Close to that.
We, we do think we pulled a lot of students back again. Our, um, Arizona State University Partnership, I think I walked past that today. That's running pretty full all day of students knocking, like I said, you can, students knocking out whole college credit. So that's over in the annex of students doing. So I think having like those ASU programs and the university programs and the dual credit programs. So we'll definitely be on a mission to expand our dual credit offerings.
Thank you.
Next is superintendent report.
I'm gonna hand this over to our executive director of teaching and learning, Mark Keating real quick. Mark has been working fast and furious and he's been on Zoom calls all day today. So honestly, I have not even had a chance to check in with Mark on success, but he's brought me contracts to sign of grants we've been awarded. So Mark, you've had a few. Do you want to talk about some of the successes you've had?
Yeah, so we just were accepted for one, a limitless grant, twenty-five thousand dollar grant. And what that did was it got us into a cohort of state leaders, uh, that are leading the charge on, uh, creating a better system for college and career readiness for the high school students. We were awarded what's called an H two P. It's, or Learnless, by the way, is funded through the Gates Foundation. H two P is a twenty thousand dollar grant. And what that did for us is it's, it's, it's a program that's designed to create data that, uh, tries to find out where the gaps are in different school systems in terms of getting their, uh, students to apply for, uh, post-high school education. We also were awarded, um, I think we got, we were put into a program called, uh, it's called LOG App. It's the Washington Guaranteed Acceptance Program. And what that does for us, uh, is that any student that graduates from Alma High School or East Grace Harbor that has fulfilled the state requirements, the caters, and earned a three-point-oh GPA or better, uh, it would be guaranteed acceptance into the state, uh, Washington State colleges or universities, which is a big deal. Chris was talking earlier about the Equity Institute, we're partnering, partnering with the Equity Institute, um, to have some real candid conversations with students and staff around equity in our schools. So it's focused on equity education, be doing some student training, staff training, and community training. So it's, uh, focused on equity education, be doing some student training, staff training, and community training. Then you know the master-based learning group's been, um, working to upload our s- uh, standards, proficiency scales. We just posted some trainings where, um, we're now able to create grade books. So what we have going right now, some select folks who've been on board for the last two years putting this together are actually starting to work in the empower system, create their own, create grade books, uh, bring, uh, student work in and activities and those types of things. So next step would be, uh, we still, at the elementary, we still have to do the, uh, D L A standards. We did, we're focused on math last year. And then, uh, we're continuing to get the, uh, high school and East Grace Harbor and middle school standards in as well. Uh, one other thing to add to that would be that, um, Tasha has applied for the same master-based learning grant at the high school. Do you know the one that we, the three that we have right now are through the elementary, the middle school, and East Grace Harbor. So the high school's applying for our second, they would be in the second cohort, would be really, it would be really essential there because the high school started a little bit behind the ball in terms of identifying standards and doing those types of things. So it'll help them gain some ground there. I want to thank Eric for the work he's been doing for uploading the LOGAP. It has been a task. I don't know if we're finished with it yet. Not quite yet, but thank you for that. So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on, a lot of hands in the pot. So a lot of people thank you.
Mark has been working really hard. I think I can celebrate Mark a lot. But I think it's worth noting, like, yeah, we reported last year, we're eighteen percent lower than the state average on students moving toward on a post-secondary education. That's kind of like all definitions. And Mark has been really meeting us now, Elma graduates no longer. We still need to apply, but you don't have to do the whole application. You literally just say, I want to go. There's no transcript process, but just accept it. That's the LOGAP.
Everyone willing to call in, man, to apply, or call in, man, to get accepted to the college. You, you are asked all of the requirements, the caters, and I have a three-point-oh or better. There's, uh, U W can attend, W S U can attend, Eastern, Western, all those big, most four-year universities in the state of Washington would guarantee your acceptance.
That's pretty cool.
You still have to pay.
The H two P is gonna let us also have all of the data going back to two thousand and sixteen on where our students have gone, how, what they did, what classes they didn't do well in. I mean, so we'll actually be able to go back and see if Elma students struggled in math classes, if Elma students struggled in D L A classes, where, what classes we have the greatest gap in. So when we begin kind of targeting our work, we can see where Elma graduates struggled in their post-secondary education. So we can target our work back to bridge that gap. So it's twenty thousand dollars, but it's also the data for every Elma graduate back to two thousand and sixteen who's gone on to, on, onto a post-secondary education. And it'll come back and tell us where their struggles were, so we can begin targeting our interventions along those struggles.
It's also gonna help us, uh, bridge the gap to, to why many of our students are not applying for FAFSA.
Yeah, we are, state average is fifty percent. Elma sits at thirty percent of our graduates are applying for FAFSA, looking for positive funding. So if students are not applying for the FAFSA and we're seventy-eight percent free introduced lunch, that means it's guaranteed free money to go to college for seventy-eight percent of our students. The bulk of our students are not even filling out the paperwork to get the free money to go to college. So that's a concern because that means in October, normally that's been doing October, this year it's doing December. That means the bulk of our students are deciding not to pursue a post-secondary education early on in their senior year. Because if you're not arranging to have the money to pay for it, then you've decided probably not to go. So we wanted to bridge that gap and raise that number of our FAFSA filing from, we don't want to be, you know, twenty, you know, twenty percent lower than the state average. We don't find that to be acceptable either. So this will allow us to target what is going on with our FAFSA filing rates. Mark has been working really, 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 really hard. So I just wanted to, I was gonna tell you about it, but Mark is here and I felt like it'd be better to hear from Mark everything that he's been getting in place on his own. Um, we did get a recognition from OSPI and at the E S D today, um, two years ago, we did lots of packaged food in our kitchens. And we have completely and totally moved our school lunch program over to Whole Foods. So that means we're cooking the food in the back now. And, uh, we did a student taste testing, I think, uh, with picadigayo, black bean, and corn dip. And, uh, the steak came in and there's a lot of restrictive rules, um, but it sounds like our whole food cooking is now being more positively reviewed. So less packaged food and more actually cooking whole food in our school lunches. And we were recognized by the E S D for how much more whole food cooking we've been doing.
That's exciting, you know, for the students and especially the college, because often a lot of our students, they don't, they've never had family members to go to college, so they don't even know what steps it takes to go to college. And I think if we can help give us that guidance to the students. And, you know, I know, uh, when I applied for colleges, one of the biggest fears is, you know, the waiting game to see if I'm getting into the school of my choice. And so this is nice to know that, you know, that, that's taken care of. And we can just focus on the other, you know, um, processes to get, to make that, uh, dream become a reality.
There was an article, yeah, it's, and the big thing is, is it's a lot of work to educate students on how to apply for college, and it's intimidating. What I like about Mark's solution now is, is instead of trying to educate students on the complicated application process, Mark's work was, he just made the application easier. Student just doesn't say if they want to go. Because Eric's work through doing a data sharing agreement, you no longer have to go get the transcript, the printout, the unofficial read. Like, there's a lot of things you had to get sent in. Eric is leading the data sharing agreement. That student's academic record will just immediately get sent over. That student needs to do nothing else. And that's, that's like, that can, Mark's the genius of it.
And I, and on the food program, I'm sure our students are gonna appreciate, you know, uh, better options for their lunches.
I think students always appreciate better options. We still have the state federal nutrition guidelines that we can't get around.
Right.
But to at least know that we're trying to bring in like, not packaged food, like whole food and cooking with the whole foods. Our child nutrition program is just really doing an incredible job. I'm really proud of them.
Well, thank you, Mark, for how you work and also you, Eric. And I know there's lots of other people behind the scenes. We just appreciate the effort that they're putting forth, you know, for our students' future. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Um.
We can do, we will be seeking an amendment to the agenda. We do not need executive session. So I might need a motion to eliminate items fourteen A. To amend the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda to remove item fourteen, executive session.
I'll second.
So there's been a motion and a second to amend the agenda to strike the executive session. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And that appears to end our meeting if all agrees.
Oh. I move to adjourn.
There's been a motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, students, for coming out today. And, uh, you, you don't just have to come only when your teachers make you come. You can.